Good evening. The Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District Board of Trustees is now convened in a committee of the whole meeting on Thursday, February the 6th, 2020 at 6:00 PM in the boardroom of Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District Instructional Support Center located 10,300 Jones Road, Houston, Texas, for the purpose of reviewing that portion of the Monday, February 10th, 2020 regular board meeting agenda designated as action items and to hear designated reports and recognitions posted in the meeting notice as required by Texas law. No action was taken at this meeting. Will be taken. Trying to get it up with already. I want to welcome the members of our audience and our television viewers to this meeting of the Board of Trustees. As the Cypress Fairbanks Board of Trustees, we are here to set goals, listen to reports, approve budgets, contracts, personnel appointments, and make policy for the district. It is not the role of the Board to make day-to-day operational decisions. The management and day-to-day operations of the district are the responsibility of the superintendent. We have policies and procedures in place to resolve concerns and issues. This is a public meeting of the Board of Trustees, not a meeting of the public. Prior to this meeting, Board members received information related to items on tonight's agenda. Agenda items will not necessarily be handled in the order listed on the notice. The meeting is open to all who wish to attend and hear the matters discussed. During the course of this meeting, the Board may determine that a closed session is necessary. In that event, the Board will meet in closed session to consider matters duly posted for this meeting as permitted by Sections 551.071 through 551.084 of the Texas Government Code. These proceedings are airing live on CFTV, Channel 16, and CFTV online on the district website. They will also be rebroadcast throughout the month on Channel 16 and available as video on demand on the website. For the tape to adequately reflect the proceedings, I respectfully ask that you please refrain from talking while others are speaking and that cell phones are turned off or in silent mode. Thank you for taking the time to join us this evening and for your interest in Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District. I would also like to take this opportunity to recognize our community leadership committee members who are in attendance this evening. Stacy Anderson, would you stand in that very crowded section you're sitting in? Thanks for being here, Stacy. The recognitions, board comments, and citizen participation portion of the agenda will be presented at the regular board meeting on Monday, February the 10th, 2020. At this time, we would proceed with the public comments portion of the agenda. Patrons who are duly registered per policy, BED Local may address the Board and make public comments on the agenda item during or before the Board's consideration of the item. The Board may also allow public comment on agenda items at all meetings. The Board will continue with the remaining agenda after the registered patrons have had an opportunity to speak. This evening, we have none that have signed up. We will now proceed with the reports portion of the agenda. Dr. Henry.
Thank you, President Covey, Board members. You know, it's my honor today to introduce a gentleman that I've actually known for about 30 years. I started my career as a superintendent 29 years ago in a district whose total student count was 230 students. And now, we have that many enroll or about every day in Cyfair ISD. But I've known Bill a long time, Bill Gumpert. He's never worked for a school district, but he's done a lot of work for school districts and really, really glad that he's here today. He's semi-retired and does a lot of research on public schools and charter schools. And he just, he has a lot of white papers that are published throughout the state. And he was kind enough to drive all the way down from the Metroplex to visit with the Cyfair Board today. And also, just so you know, Bill, this is being streamed live and it will also be replayed throughout the next month. So, a lot of people will see this over the next few weeks. So, Bill Gumpert.
Well, Mr. President, members of the Board, members of the leadership team, it's great to be here. The one thing I want to say over the last 30 years, Mark, that I've known you, you still look the same. Go ahead and return a favor. It's kind of like saying, "I love you," you're supposed to come back with it, okay? Just so you know. No, but it's great to be here. And one of the obviously big issues is the potential for privatization of public education. And I'm not here to say that's a good thing or a bad thing. What I am here to say is to give you the facts on how it impacts Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District, the community, and potentially, your students. So, with that, I'm going to run through this pretty quickly. It's a pretty, got a few slides, but be happy to go through it in greater detail. How do I move this? You can tell I'm not very technologically advanced. All right, I thought I'd start off with a video first, just kind of set it up. Where is school districts across the state of Texas? We're the ones in the boat. The point of that, that was a charter plan, just so you know. But the point of it was, we have new entrants into the public education arena, and it's state-approved charter schools. And I'm not saying they're good or bad. I'm just saying they have an impact on public education and they have an impact on your district. And what we see a lot of times is they show up and there's no communicated or collaborative effort to be able to work together and so forth, and next thing you know, they just pop up. So, that's what that was for. So, what are state-approved charters? To me, they're a disruption to the way we've typically done our educated kids or operated as a school district. From that perspective, it started back in 1995 when the legislature approved the ability of charter schools to independently operate within school districts. Big thing about business disruptions or market disruptions is it basically changes the way the cash flows from the perspective of transfers the money from the established player to the new player. And y'all have seen that in terms of what the financial impact has been to the district. And then, the big thing is disruption impacts the market leader the most. And y'all are the market leader. Every school district across the state, from that perspective, is. But it impacts you the most. So, disruption, y'all deal with them all the time. I look at it this way, what a great opportunity to be able to demonstrate the great things happening in Texas school districts in Cyfair ISD and build gratitude, support, recognition, appreciation, and respect for really what you do and, most importantly, what classroom teachers do each and every day. Basically, if you look at it from the perspective, the, one of the big differences between a school district and a charter school is school districts serve all children. Decisions are based upon input and what's best for the community and you're revenue-neutral for the most part, okay? My wife's a teacher, my daughter's a teacher. The one thing I like to say about that is school districts and teachers and administrators are mission-driven, okay? We're not motivated by anything other than trying to help kids. Charters, on the other side, it's a market-driven business. From that perspective, their number-one priority, for the most part, because if they don't do this, they won't be able to operate, is to recruit and enroll students. That's their number-one priority. Number two is decisions are based upon, sometimes, the interest of the charter, which is why they don't enroll, expand, and enroll all students and so forth. They're able to limit enrollment within their campuses and then they're serving the needs of the difference. I look at it this way. School districts think with their heart, we act with our heart. There is some monetary benefit to being a charter school. The one thing I guess I would highlight, and I've sat through a lot of board meetings in my last 30 years, probably not as many as you, Dr. Henry, but the one thing that I've seen is every dollar is always, I mean, when you're looking at spending $50,000 or $100,000, the discussion always comes up, "Well, hang on, that's another teacher. That's two teachers." And that's just the way school districts think. So, there's a little bit differences in terms of operations between the two. Charters, by and large, are approved by the state. There's no really community involvement or taxpayer involvement. Despite a surprise maybe from some people, charters are funded from taxpayer dollars. They're local tax dollars that, when they go through the state funding system, the state has then diverted those to the charters. Unlike you who have been elected to represent the community, the boards of charters are appointed. So, there's a private board. Y'all had a big bond program here not too long ago, and I'm sure you worked very diligently and hard for that for probably over 18 months preparing for it. Charters are able to issue bonds without taxpayer approval, so they don't have to be able to have an election. So, if they want to expand, they have the ability to go out and just sell bonds, supported by the revenues they get from the state. And then, some of the other things, I think that's, needs at least to be discussed is charters, a lot of them are evaluated under the alternative academic accountability system. So, when you see the ratings of certain charters and you compare them to school districts, they're not always comparable because some of them are under the alternative system. The only other thing I'd bring up on this would be, there's new rules proposed by TEA and the Commissioner that would allow charters to expand and have more freedom to do that as long as they've met certain qualifications. So, we have a dual taxpayer-funded education system. And the whole reason we have that, based upon the enabling legislation, is student outcomes were to be enhanced by transferring control of local schools to private organizations. And they have a little bit more flexibility to spend the money. Who can argue with that? Doing better for kids. But these are the facts. These are the 2019 academic ratings. You'll see community-based school districts statewide on the left, privately-operated charters on the right. School districts still continue to perform better academically based upon the state's own standards. I'm not saying ratings are the end-all, the be-all. What I'm trying to say is, based upon the state's measurement, charter, school districts are outperforming charter schools. Y'all might be familiar with Senate Bill 1882, where you have incentive to go ahead and enter into an arrangement to allow a charter or a nonprofit to basically run your schools. These are some that have been completed within the last year or two. You'll see where they are, they're color-coded in terms of the districts. But what's interesting about this is after being turned over, seven of the 11 actually have lower student outcomes during that period in time. Now, this is a new program, we'll see how it shakes out, but these are the early results. So, annually, we talk about taxpayer funding. Basically, funding for charters has gone from 1.3 billion to 3.28, increase of 147% over the last seven years. About 335,000 students right now in charter schools. I don't have a crystal ball any better than anybody else in this room, but I would look for that to, that trend to continue, and we'll probably be at 6.5 billion within seven years or so. I talked about 1995, it's 25 years ago. This is the amount of money that charters have received since inception. We're talking $23.5 billion to be able to have charter schools operating in the same communities as school districts. This is the estimated impact statewide. As you know, this isn't just a situation for Cypress Fairbanks ISD, it's not a situation just for Houston. If you look throughout here, it's basically across the state of Texas that we're seeing the expansion of charter schools, which is, and this is an estimate of the dollars that are being diverted from school districts to charters in those regions. This colorful list right here is the top 25 most impacted school districts. You will see right here, Houston's number one, Dallas is number two. Y'all are the third-largest school district, is that right? You're number 17. So, that tells me that you're doing a pretty good job about retaining students when you're the third-largest, but you're the 17 most impacted. Based upon this, it's about 3,500 students that reside within Cyfair are transferring to charter schools. And that's a cost of about, I don't know, $20, $23 million per year. And I guess what I would encourage you to look at is, that's one year, you can make, you can make that work, but look at it over a 10-year period. Look at it over a 20-year period. Over a 10-year period, that's $230 million. So, what ends up happening when a charter comes to town, and there's been a lot of discussion about this, but, so they set up shop, great, they're going to educate kids, but here's the issue. You have kids transferring from multiple campuses. You have students transferring from multiple grades, okay? So, that puts a strain on how you can manage your expenses when the revenue walks out the door, when a student goes to a charter, okay? The estimate is about $6,600 per student is how much revenue is lost when a student transfers. But let's say 10 students transfer, okay? They come from 10 different campuses. Can you reduce, can you get rid of a principal? No. Can you get rid of a teacher? No. So, you, in addition, you can't reduce your transportation costs, you can't reduce your utility costs, okay? So, it's increasing your operating cost per student as students leave because you don't have the same economies of scale that you once had. So, you can somewhat change your variable cost, fixed costs are going to stay basically the same. So, what's the net impact? Decreased funding for operations is $2.2 billion statewide. For, that's what the monies that school districts don't receive. Ability to reduce operating cost, I've estimated, based upon my review, it's about 40% of what you can reduce over time. So, basically, the net annual financial impact of school districts, in my estimate, is about $1.3 billion per year by having two separate systems. So, we got 2.4. When you look at it from a cost perspective, you got the impact to school districts, then you have the additional money that charters get over and above what you lose. So, you lose $6,600, let's say they get $10,000 per kid, someone has to pay that, the state's, the state's paying that, so that's an additional cost. So, we ended up being about $2.5 billion is my estimate of the cost of having two systems within the state of Texas. What can $2.5 billion buy? It can buy a $7,000 raise for every teacher. It can fund $800 for each economically disadvantaged student to help them, $5,000 for a special needs student, or it can give seven cents of property tax relief. So, that should give you some, some basic context on what we're talking about with $2.5 billion. So, these are the players. There's 176 charters, I believe, in the state of Texas that are currently operating. These are the seven largest. And the thing that I wanted to highlight with this, and you can see the names there, but basically, they enroll 55% of the kids. And they account for 80% of the growth, okay? So, we're not in a situation where we're seeing 150 charters rapidly expanding and so forth. What we're seeing is just a few charters that are really, what I'll call franchising out, where they're moving to different, in different locations, but it's the same charters. So, I call them super charters, just because they're, 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 they're large, and there's a handful of them. But if you look at the top, the top 10 charters here, basically, enrollment has increased by 319% over the last 10 years, okay? From that perspective, the enrollment cap from TEA was 51,362 in 2009, now it's 267,000, okay? That's a difference of 215,000. My point on that is, there was never a discussion with a school administrator at a school district, a Board of Trustees, or an elected official within any community as these expansions got approved. So, where's it coming from? Well, in the education reform movement, and I'm not going to get too far into that, but basically, there's a lot of private dollars that are supporting the education reform movement or the privatization of public education. This is just KIP. You'll see who the private donors are there, 60 million from a couple between 25 and 60, go on down the list. Next one is IDEA Public Schools. Sure, they do a great job. IDEA Public Schools is the largest and fastest-growing charter in the state of Texas, and I believe they're also the fastest-growing in the country. They're currently expanding in Louisiana, Florida, and I think Ohio's in process now. But the point here that I wanted to bring out, and it's color-coded here, is these are private dollars that have been provided to this charter to be able to expand in those communities. So, my point is their expansion is not necessarily being directed by them, it's being directed by the donors that want, that are giving them money to go ahead and move forward. The latest one was in Midland, Odessa, $55 million to be able to expand and build 10 new campuses there. When I talk about expansion, I'm going to use IDEA as the example here. And once again, everything they're doing is legal, I'm not saying a negative word about them. What I'm trying to point out is the rapid growth that's occurring without any approvals or discussions with school districts. 51 new schools they're opening in the next two years. I would guess y'all maybe opened four or five is the most you've ever opened in a year? Probably in that ballpark? Okay, so that would be eight? They're opening 51 across the state of Texas. They're planning on being at 100,000 students a decade now, they're going to be 250,000. They're going to be the seventh-largest school system based upon, in the US, based upon the way this is designed. They're going to be about twice your size. How do they get there? Well, you might have read some stuff here recently, and I'm not going to get into that, but basically, there's a lot of advertising that goes on to be able to recruit students. Based upon 2018 and 19, spent $13.3 million to fundraise and to advertise. I estimate their cost is about $700 per kid to be able to recruit a new student. So, how do they do that? And it doesn't include this, they have full-time student recruiters on staff in every region and at the headquarters, that their job is to go out and recruit students in local communities. You can see there, go on down the list. But they also have regional campus advocacy and engagement teams, where they're training parents and they're training staff to be able to advocate in the communities to be able to support the continued expansion. Once again, 100% legal, I'm just telling you what is going on outside. Another organization you see here, I think it's the Texas Public Charter School Association right now. The one thing I wanted to highlight here, this is a nonprofit organization, but the purpose. It was formed in 2008 to unify, support, and grow the charter school movement, okay? Another organization that actually is based here in Houston is basically an organization that helps parents through the school choice process. And if you look there at the bottom, the recruiting services, it's actually designed, and I know they've, they've worked with, I don't know how many charters, but I know at least one, but basically, they're being paid to recruit students independently into these different charters. So, we talk about marketing, right? And school districts are pretty cut and dry, very conservative. But there's a couple of different types of charters. Number one is, there's one that is targeting economically disadvantaged students with basically a college promise. And you'll see here, Harmony, Gas Prep, IDEA. IDEA, I think, is 100% college acceptance for the last 13 years, okay? That's pretty amazing. That is unbelievable. Talk about raising the bar, Dr. Henry. How's it happen? It's self-manufactured. In their student handbooks, you cannot graduate from IDEA Public Schools or any of these schools without being accepted, accepted to college. So, what happens to those kids that aren't on the college track? Basically, about 30% of kids that are in ninth grade don't end up being there their senior year to graduate, so. Another one is types of charters, is basically ones that are moving into diverse communities and targeting the recruitment of the more affluent students. This is a place in Flower Mount, Texas, North Texas. But basically, you'll see a charter, you'll see the picture there, and then you'll see the picture behind it, okay? Those are the houses of the kids that are going to that charter school. The median home price is about $650,000. And when I look at it from a public education perspective, the two schools that they're recruiting from that are within a mile each of that, of that charter school, they're rated 95 and 96. They're two of the highest-performing elementary schools in the state of Texas, so. Lot of dots, but basically, this is a summary of the 159 charter campuses that are in the greater Houston area. And I know it's tried to, it's hard to tell, you know, exactly how this impacts you, the point here is that it's pretty widespread across the greater Houston area. So, let's talk about you, my wife's favorite topic, not me, her. I shouldn't say that. Anyways, basically, this is your enrollment since 2011, '12. You had 2,000 kids, Cyfair students that had transferred to charters, and then, now, the estimate's about 3,500, give or take. And the one things I wanted to highlight here, and they're highlighted in yellow, you had International Leadership of Texas, IL Texas, and then you had School of Science and Technology. Those opened in that year, which is why you saw the spike in enrollment. You'll see the same thing in 2018, '19. So, basically, whenever a new charter comes to town, based upon history, you're going to lose some more students. This is the financial impact, I already covered this, but basically, it's about $23 million a year. So, let's look at the net impact to you. We talked about you could reduce your cost by about 40%, and I haven't done, you know, a detailed analysis of this, so this is just an estimate. But basically, you lose $23 million, you can recut your cost by about 10. So, basically, the net financial impact to the district on an annual basis is about $13.2 million per year. That's 13.2 million you have for student programs, student instruction, student services because of the dual system. Over a 10-year period, it's $132 million. So, this is where you are, you've got 15 basic charters that are serving students within Cyfair ISD. You'll see them there, largest one's Harmony, then you have International Leadership of Texas, and go on down the list. But there's 15 separate privately-operated charters that are recruiting and serving students that reside within Cyfair. Here's some ratings of some of them. Y'all had an 89 rating based upon the last go-round from, from TEA. Obviously, everything considered, you were an A. But these are some of the ones that, the campuses that students are attending that reside within your district. You'll see their range from School and Technology, School of Science and Technology, you'll see there at a rate of a D, and all the other ones are there in the 80s or the 70s, okay? But all of them are below what your rating is as a district. Okay, but all of them are below what your rating is as a district. So let's look at student demographics. Um, y'all are a very diverse community like, like the state of Texas. Y'all serve more at-risk kids than all but two of the charters. You serve more special education or special needs kids than all the charters. And then you certainly serve more students that have disciplinary placements, because charters, um, are legally able to, um, that, they don't have to enroll those students. Okay, that can be, they can go through the application process, but if they've got a disciplinary history, they don't have to enroll it. So they can deny enrollment to those type of students. As I said, my wife's a teacher, so I, I understand the importance of being a professional educator. And from that perspective, um, this is a comparison of the certified teachers within Cyfair ISD and then some of the charters. Um, this is, y'all may be at a hundred percent. The data that I had showed you had a total of sixty teachers that were uncertified out of about seventy, seventy-three hundred. So it's less than one percent.
And, and just for clarification, those are going to be those people in the trades in the CTE area.
Yep. But then you look at the charters. Um, as I said, IDEA Public Schools, um, they have over a thousand teachers that are uncertified. Fifty-five point eight percent of the teachers that are in that charter are not certified. You go on down the list, I'm not going to read them to you. International Leadership of Texas is forty-five, KIP's forty-three. So you're delivering people that have been through the training, have the education, and have the understanding of how to educate kids. So, let's play a little game. Some of y'all are old enough, but not, not most of you, but this goes back to nineteen seventy-five. We had the Pepsi Coke Challenge on national TV. I think it was actually during the Super Bowl. Pepsi won. Coke's the number one soft brand, or soft drink. And I bring that up because, um, charters are getting kids even though you may have a superior product. So let's play a game. Based upon this, what school would you choose for your child? A, B, C, or D? A? It's kind of like the Masked Singer. A's Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District. Then you have IDEA, Harmony, and International Leadership of Texas. Okay, so yeah, those are three charters that are, that are obviously in your district. And the one thing I wanted to highlight is when you get like an average teacher experience, teacher turnover rate, class, uh, average class, class size in the grade three, instruction per student, how much is being spent, career tech and extracurricular, security monitoring, and the least amount on general administration and school leadership. Y'all lead every one of these categories. Okay? The charters spend less on student programs, they spend more on general administration and school leadership, and their teachers don't have the same level of experience. Let's put that in perspective. Okay, those are per student costs. And to a degree, they're not, they're not fair because there's different, I mean, there's some, I mean, y'all are hundred-plus thousand students. Some of them are, you know, ten thousand or fifteen or thirty. So that's really not a totally perfect comparison in terms of the cost on general administration. But this is. So you take IDEA Public Schools and what they spend per student, and, and this point of they were about thirty-five, thirty-six hundred, or thirty-six thousand, excuse me. And then take the average of three school districts that have basically thirty-five thousand kids. And then you compare those two. IDEA spent thirty-seven point three million more in two thousand seven, eighteen on general administration and school leadership than these three school districts, the average of these three school districts, which are the same size. Okay? Because there's only so much money there, right? What's the result? The result is forty-one million dollars less was spent by IDEA than these school districts on general adminis- or, or on, uh, student instruction. Okay? You only got so many, you only, you only got so much money, and where you put it affects the other. So let's talk about gradu- graduates. Based upon my data, two thousand ten, I know it's a long time ago, but that, this data is through two thousand eighteen. So it's basically giving someone eight years to be able to enroll or, or, or achieve college or, uh, get a college education. Y'all had sixteen hundred and fifty-four, uh, graduates that year, about thirteen hundred enrolled in college. And you'll see here the college preparatory charters that I've shown here. Um, these are the graduates that they had in two thousand ten. And then I've estimated what they were when we're talking about enrolling in college. Okay, some of these we're talking about a very, very small sample size. Okay, where we have fifteen kids that graduated, or fifteen that went to college. So I think when you look at the job that's being done across the state of Texas, you've also got to look at the high volume of students that are being served in the various areas. Post-secondary, this is the same two thousand, class of two thousand ten. What this basically is, is it shows the percentage that enrolled in college, that, that graduate, or high school graduates that enroll in college, and then the percentage that earned a degree or a certification. Okay, this is from T P E R, Texas Education Reports, and some data from T E A. But basically, almost sixty percent of your students that enroll in a Texas public college or university graduate with a degree or certification. That's above the state average. You look at these, these others, um, they're all below, and some of them are significantly below where y'all are in terms of students that enroll in college and actually graduate. So one of the things that's been said a lot of times is, well, we serve, you know, primarily economically disadvantaged students. And I'll say, you know, there's a lot of school districts that are primarily economically disadvantaged students. So what this is, it looks at the same thing, but it looks at Cypress, uh, Cypress Fairbanks and what your economically disadvantaged students do. And the rate's fifty, fifty-six percent, basically, of the kids that enroll in college actually graduate with a degree or certification. You'll see what the other ones are there. Okay, so once again, even for economically disadvantaged kids, even though you serve everyone, your college graduation rate is higher. Let's look about income. I've got a twenty-six-year-old, and he's been welcomed to the real world, and I've never forget. Uh, he got a job last year, and the first thing he called me, he said, "Dad, where'd all my money go?" I said, "It's called healthcare and taxes." Anyways, so this is what a graduate of these institutions that are twenty-five to thirty, that have earned a bachelor's degree from a Texas public university. Y'all have sixty-six hundred students that have, you know, met this, based upon this data. The average with a bachelor's degree, median earnings is about almost fifty-six thousand dollars. And then I compare that with what the other, the charters are that, um, you compete with, and they're all lower. And so basically, the average of these five charters is forty-five thousand. Y'all are fifty-five, fifty-six thousand, ten thousand dollar difference per year. It's a lot of money. Okay, with the same bachelor's degree from a Texas public university. But think about that, and I can't say what, what's going to happen, but look at it over a thirty-year period. If that difference continues, an education from Cyfair could potentially be as much as three hundred thousand dollars more beneficial to your graduates. So, let's talk a little bit about growth, and I'm sure y'all are already familiar with this, but there are four new charters that, um, have submitted applications to be able to open new charters, um, that may impact your district, uh, here in the Houston area. I won't read them, but there they are. But these are the charters that are already been approved, that have submitted or have planned expansion within the area. Um, and this isn't all, you know, all-inclusive. These are just as many as I could fit on this page. But basically, you'll see that, um, there's a significant amount of existing charters that are going to expand, uh, within the next year or two within this area. I've studied this for eight years. Um, and I've talked to a lot of people, um, over that time, a lot of my friends, uh, even some of my enemies. But the bottom line to it is, most parents don't know a whole lot about the school choice movement or the education reform movement. They don't know, and they're not going to investigate teacher experience and what Cyfair offers versus what someone else is recruiting them, a school they're recruiting them to go to. Okay, and so I look at it from the perspective is, competition's great, but everyone's got to have the same information. So why do they choose charters? Same reason people like the Dallas Cowboys. Most valuable franchise in the world, and they haven't been to a Super Bowl in twenty-five years. Perception matters more than the product. And I'm not going to say anything about the Astros stealing signs, so... So, when you go to the grocery store, let's look at it this way. You go to the grocery store, um, and I actually enjoy going to the grocery store, because I'm fully retired, so it gives me an opportunity to get out of the house. Uh, but anyways, basically, which brand would you buy? The vast majority are going to buy the Heinz. They're not going to buy the generic brand. Okay, and what we've got to understand as school districts, we've got to understand that parents perceive us as the, as the generic brand. We've always been here. Y'all have been here for seventy-five years, right? This other stuff's new. Okay, so from that perspective, you're viewed as the generic brand. We need to change that conversation. Big thing I wanted to do as we went through this is, you know, as I said, disruption gives you an opportunity to be able to really look at what you're doing, and in your case, to be able to appreciate the great things that are happening within your district. So I thank the board, the administrators, most importantly, your teachers and support staff that are doing the real work. You prepare all students. You provide a top-notch education. You maximize the resources for instruction. You're spending more than a thousand dollars more on instruction than the privately, privately operated charters, uh, some of them within your district. You're one of the largest employers. You're a major economic driver. Okay, if you did the math on the economic impact of your bond program, and then plus the economic impact of students coming back here once they've graduated and are earning, you're a major economic driver. You're responsive to the community. And I look at it this way, you serve for a purpose, and the purpose is you care. So, simple answer going forward. We all like to think that, my, my kids will agree with this, like, like they'd say that I think I'm important. Okay, but this really is not the fight of the district. It's not the fight of me in terms of privatization or not. At the end of the day, the school district belongs to the community, and we're here to serve the community. And so it's really their decision on, on, on how things should, should be designed. Um, it's their families, their students, and their taxes. So from that perspective, and I know you, you all operate this way, but to me, they deserve to know the facts and to have a voice and the choice of how the public education system is designed in their community. And that all comes down to community education. So at the end of the day, all our eyes are on y'all as the premier leaders of education within your community. Got to maintain the public trust in your school district, which you've done, but that's going to get more difficult going forward. Serve the best interest of the entire community, and serve the best interest of all students. So, the eyes are on you. So this is my recommendation to you. As education leaders, you got to educate your stakeholders. You got to sing your song. Okay, and when that happens, this is what will happen by the community. It'll all be all right. Well, that's it. I appreciate your time, be happy to address any questions. Um, I know there was a lot of information there, but, um, really, at the end of the day, it's about serving kids. And as the education leaders within your community, um, that responsibility falls on you. And you just need to be aware of the things that may potentially impact that. And, um, if charter schools are, are meant to be, so be it. That's not my decision, but it should be the community's decision. And I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Mr. Gumbert. Anybody got any questions? Tom?
First, Mr. Gumbert, thank you for being here tonight. Very informative, very factual. I did want to follow up on a couple of items, uh, to highlight, and also to make certain my understanding is right on target. First, if a requirement for graduation from high school to enroll in college exists, doesn't that serve as a filtering system for students? Aren't you separating by the school choice? That the choice is by the charter and not by the parent and the child?
Um, I would answer that by saying that, um, it certainly is going to be more attractive to students that, um, aren't in career intact and looking, and students that are looking to go to college. Uh, so yes, there is a, an indirect filtering process during that because students that aren't on the college route or don't want to go that route, um, aren't going to apply there.
So there's a filtering process, but if I remember your statistics, your statistics seem to indicate that Cyfair students tended to outperform in attending college and being successful in college than those students who chose to go to charter schools. Is that, is that a correct understanding?
That is what, that is what the factual data, um, from T E A and from T P E R, Texas Education Reports, would, would show, yes. And that's exactly where I got my data. So, yes.
You pointed out in your presentation that Cyfair outperforms, their students outperform, teachers have lower turnover, more training, uh, fewer dollars are spent on admin than charters. But there's an area that you did not address, and, and I would like for you to address it even from an anecdotal perspective. How do charters compare to ISDs in general or Cyfair specifically in regards to access to content, breadth, and enhanced quality of academic and co and extracurricular activities?
That was a long question.
So, so, so to bust it up, uh, our students here at the higher-performing levels, not only can they take basically a year of college calculus, there's even additional calculus courses offered past that first year. And many of our students take those. Uh, many of our students take, uh, numerous A P and dual-credit courses. But more than that, uh, many of our CTE programs are considered to be among the best in the state, which says there's quality in addition to breadth of course offerings. And so I was wondering, by content, does Cyfair offer more than the charters? Are they comparable, or do charters have the ability and do in fact offer more in the way of content than we do?
I would say that, and I haven't done a, you know, a thorough investigation of, of every, all the offerings within Cypress Fairbanks ISD. Um, I'm a former finance person, so I'm going to go to where the dollars are. You spend significantly more per student for career intact, co, and extracurricular activities than the privately operated charters do. And based upon discussions that I've had, and I mean, I don't have factual data for this, but the programming, uh, and the opportunities of students is significantly higher within the vast majority of school districts than they are in charters. charters had seemed to have, in my opinion, a little bit narrower focus, um, than really a diverse education. And I like to look at it as Cyfair educates the whole child.
I found it interesting, just a handful of nights ago, I attended with some of my colleagues, and the superintendent, of course, the recognition of national merit students. Uh, and I found it interesting- And I found it interesting that several of them started at some of these charter schools, but they switched to our high schools as their choice for graduation. And perhaps that's because of the content. Since you do have a financial background, let me switch to something a little bit different. So I took the liberty of looking up on the website of one of these major charters that you identified, one of the super charters, and compared financial information as posted between Cyfair and just one of these charters. So if you go to the Cyfair website, you find our audited financials for the fiscal year ending 2019 posted. Yet when I went to one of theirs, the most recent was for the fiscal year ending 2016. So is that a lack of financial transparency?
I can't say it's a lack of financial transparency. What I can tell you is that, and I'm not a lawyer, but pursuant to the law, charters are required to be able to, or to post their audited financial statements on their website.
I will say what they had posted for 17 and 18, it was marked draft, awaiting comment from management. So perhaps they're in the process of finalizing for those two years and I'm sure 19 will follow. As part of that, and you with a financial background, you will have read these and perhaps have written some of those, there's a section called Management's Discussion and Analysis. And from our audited financials, our auditors remind us that such information, although not a part of the basic financial statements, is required by the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. Yet that document is not part of the audited financials for that charter entity even though it is for ours. Is that a lack of financial transparency or just a clerical oversight?
I'm not an accountant, but I would think, you know, that it is, but once again, when I say finance background, it's more on school finance than it is on the accounting side, but it seems that way, but I can't answer that definitively.
One of those super charters that you identified, and I went to a meeting where the fellow spoke, and this is back when he had just, his entity had just been appointed to take over low performing schools in the state of Tennessee. And he was very excited and there were cameras there and all kinds of media folks. But is my understanding correct that they pulled out of Tennessee because just like here in Texas, they're taking over these low performing schools, they could not enhance student attainment?
I believe what you're, you may be alluding to the Achievement School District, if memory serves me correctly.
Yes, exactly.
Yes, that was, everything that I have read and everything that I have seen is that they were going to take the lowest performing schools and move them up over a period in time and to be the top performing schools. That didn't happen. A lot of them are still down in the lowest performing schools. So it does look like they're trying to revise that program at this point. The exact way it's going to be designed, I can't tell you that, but I like to be positive, so I'm not going to say it was a failure. I would just say that the expectations weren't fully realized.
Mr. Jackson, just to add to that, the founder of one of the major charter chains that was responsible for that made a statement. He said, "The charter model does not work in neighborhood schools." That's almost a direct quote, so in other words, the charter model does not work for all children. It works for select children.
Well, and Dr. Henry, we also discussed how they select some of those children, but at least happily in our area, even with them pre-selecting, they aren't getting the results that they tout. I guess about nine or 10 years ago, when I used to sit out in the chairs and Dr. Anthony was up here, I heard him state that charters at that time received $1,000 more from the state for instruction than Cyfair did. Do we have any update on that information? Is that still true or do we now get more money than they do since we outperformed them?
I wish I would have included this in the slide.
I know that number. It's roughly, they receive about $1,850 more than we do per child since House Bill III and all of that new financial legislation passed, so nearly double.
So they're being financially rewarded for not delivering at the same level as we are?
Exactly. A child in Cyfair can go to a Cyfair ISD school, cross the street, go to a charter school and it costs the state of Texas $1,850 more for less results.
I did find it interesting when I took a look at the financial statements in the debt section, that these were bonds that were out issued by the city of Houston for higher education that somehow this charter was able to tap into. I'm not entirely certain how that happens, but their net effective interest rate was 2% or less with all the subsidies that were built in and that's merely out of the financial statements. Thank you.
And they go through, they go through higher education authorities because they're not a governmental entity, so they have to have a governmental entity to be able to sponsor, to allow them to be able to issue the bonds on a tax exempt basis. So, and the one thing that I would throw out there, and I don't have the total updated number, but we're talking about $3.6 billion of bonds have been issued by charter schools that are being repaid by state monies or public dollars.
And I did notice those bonds were secured by state of Texas education revenue received by that charter.
Yes.
Thank you for your presentation, sir.
Thank you.
I'm going to add one more thing to that. If the state of Texas views charters as important because it provides choice, okay, I won't argue with that, but if they argue that charters are more efficient and are providing a better product, it just doesn't come out in the wash. So on two of the three things that they might tout charter schools for compared to public schools, they fail miserably.
Dr. Ogletree?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Gumbert. Great, very comprehensive report. A couple of years ago, I believe it was two years ago, we in our district began and what we looked at as an aggressive promotion of what we do and we did ads and billboards and the like promoting that we had something to cheer for. Am I hearing from you that that approach is not the right approach, that our approach should be in the messaging of actually comparing what we offer and what we do to the charters?
Yeah, I'm not in a position to say that's what you should or shouldn't be doing. I guess what I would be saying is when you look at the overall marketing perspective, okay, everyone knows who Cypress Fairbanks ISD is. Okay, you're a known commodity. People have a perception or a thought already about your school district. You'll see the charters use advertising and billboards and so forth because they don't have the same recognition that you have. So there's more from an awareness perspective, if you will, and that's really what most billboards are for. Long story short, what I would tell you and what I've visited with a lot of districts about is it's really a multifaceted approach. You have to do, you know, I don't call it marketing. I don't like that word because I don't think school districts are, you know, should really do that. I look at it as educating, okay? Now, you can call it marketing because basically you're just throwing the facts out. And so from that perspective, I look at it as, I think it needs to be a multifaceted community education plan to be able to help educate people about the qualities and really compare and contrast. It's competition, that's what we talk about, right? You don't have to talk, I mean, you don't have to point out negative things and everything needs to be positive, but my point is people have to know the facts and until that happens, it's going to continue. The other thing that I think is very important to be able to engage your community with is you don't have full-time student recruiters, okay? So you've got to educate your staff to a degree to be able to allow them and taxpayers to be able to help tell your story, okay? You're not going to spend millions of dollars for people to knock on doors and say, "Hey, come, you know, come to Cyfair ISD," right? That's what you're competing with. And so I look at it this way, at the end of the day, your biggest asset's your community and your teachers and they need to be part of the process.
I ask that because we, families move here because of our schools. I mean, we tout that and you would think that if there was any district with our statistical data, with what we do with students, if there was any district a charter would choose not to open up in, it would be Cyfair ISD, yet that is not true. The messaging, what is the particular messaging that they are doing? Did you study that?
I've looked into that and I guess, number one, they spent a lot of money on marketing and they spent a lot of money on recruiting students. I got an email two days ago and it was from a parent that had been recruited to join one of the charters. And the opening line is, "We have a great opportunity for your child." And then it goes on to say, "What if I could promise you that your child would be accepted to the premier private school in the state of Texas at no cost to you?" It's a charter school that was writing this, okay? And my point is, I think that parents, because there's not a whole lot of transparency, look at it from the perspective of that it's a private education and that's the way it's marketed a lot of times. I saw another charter that is actually in your district, they looked at it from the perspective, the recruiting slogan was, "Public tuition-free, public charter school structured like a private school." Okay? So, I think you've got to get, you've got to go out, people want what's best for their kids. They just need to know what is best. And I guess, you know, a lot of people have always asked me why I volunteered to do this and why I left my career to do this. And it's because it's all about the kids. And when you start recruiting families and you start recruiting kids to secure taxpayer dollars without giving them the facts, choice is great, but you've got to give them the facts. And that bothers me because, and I talk to districts all the time, okay, you get a lot of students back. They dip their toe in the water and saw how great it was, okay? But as expansion moves forward with charters, you're going to have more and more parents in that same position. And we all know student mobility, the negative implications of that from an education standpoint. As the child goes through different schools, has to make new friends and so forth, so at the end of the day, it's all about the kids and I appreciate everything that you guys do to support your community and to support all kids.
Ms. Hanneman?
Thank you very much for your informative presentation. In addition to informing our community and our parents about the benefits of attending Cyfair ISD, I feel like perhaps we also need to be educating our elected officials with our state, at our state legislature about the, maybe the unintended consequences or some of the impact that some of the legislation is having on local ISDs. What would you say would be the top issues if we were to speak with our elected officials at the state level in terms of helping them understand the impact of their actions and their legislation on ISDs?
Yeah, I'm not a political person, so.
So maybe the way, I mean, I'm thinking like the common application, the waiting list?
What I would say, a common application, I think that's really a couple of different things. Number one, you need to be, charters need to be in a position where they have to disclose certain facts to families that they are recruiting, okay? Because right now, there's no oversight for that. And so I can tell, you know, if I had my own charter school, I could tell that parent anything.
So transparency?
Transparency in terms of the recruiting process.
Okay.
I look at it from an advertising perspective as well and we talked about the 100% college acceptance rate and, you know, that's self-manufactured because you have to graduate, you know, you can only graduate if you got accepted to college, okay? I'm not saying that's right or wrong. I guess what I'm saying is there's some truth in advertising that needs to happen. We're dealing with kids. We're dealing with taxpayer money. From that perspective, that needs to be regulated. I also think that, I mean, I go down this path a lot, but the vast majority of your teachers are licensed. Plumbers need to be licensed, electricians, doctors, all professionals basically have to be. I was a finance professional, I had to be, I had to be registered. I think that's another important point to be able to ensure that, and I'm not saying, you know, an uncertified teacher's not a good teacher. What I'm saying is there are some steps to go through to be able to ensure that all students are in a position that they're going to be able to be served by someone that's gone through that training.
So what it sounds like to me is if we're going to compete, we want to make sure we're competing on a level playing field and that the same rules that are placed on ISDs are, that charter schools are held at those same standards, whether it's accountability, transparency, such?
Yes, and I hesitate only because the charters will say that they have the same accountability or they actually have more accountability because if they fail for three years, then they get shut down. What I'm looking at is really from transparency to parents that they're recruiting. I think that's really the most important thing. I always use this analogy, my kids play select hockey, travel hockey. I never looked at the coach. I never, you know, wow, my kid got recruited. You know, my kid got, you know, wanted on this team, right? I think a lot of that's happening and without the investigation or the comparisons being provided of what they're walking away from versus what they're walking into, if that makes sense.
Thank you.
Mr. Gumbert, thank you very much. Ms. Hanneman and I actually got to attend a hearing on the possible change in charter appraisals and the rules about two weeks ago. And one of the things, and you mentioned it tonight, that they mentioned was the transfer of high school students back to public schools. You mentioned 30 and I thought that they had said like 37%, but 30% is a lot. When you look at that, is there any place that gives us any reasoning on why they're transferring back in?
No.
No? Just that they transfer?
It's just that they transfer and, I mean, that's one of the things that I've encouraged a lot of school districts to begin to look into is to be able to find out, you know, why people are coming and why people are going. And so it's part of that education process, but that's data that's not available to my understanding or it's not published from the state, but it certainly would be valuable information going forward because I'm sure there's a wide variety of reasons why that occurs.
Okay, so we really appreciate this. We've needed this and I understand we're going to be able to get this in print too, to kind of review. Thank you so much for taking the time to come. I'm sorry that you know Mark that long, but it's good to have you here anyway. So thank you very much, sir.
I appreciate, I appreciate y'all and I should have said this at the beginning, but I'm a volunteer, so you got what you paid for.
All right. 5B, Human Resources Department will provide an oral report on the 2019-2020 Board Monitoring System Human Capital Goal Objective Number Three. And for those that don't know, the board has six goals that we always are having implemented in the district and this is number three.
Good evening. Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Deborah, you take it? Dr. Deborah?
Yeah, she's not quite ready, but she's getting there.
She looks like she's ready.
She is, she looks really nice tonight.
Okay.
Tonight, we want to talk to you about goal three, objective three. You know, we were tasked with hiring 150 pre-K teachers in 100 days. Let me say that again. 150 pre-K teachers, our staff, in 100 days. So right now, if you will-
They gave you 50 days off?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. If you will sit back and relax while Assistant Superintendent Sharita Franklin- If you will sit back and relax while Assistant Superintendent Sharita Franklin narrates for you, hashtag, "Hooray for Pre-K." Sharita Franklin?
Board of Trustees, Dr. Henry, and all that are listening, I am here to report on HR's hiring of staff for our full-day pre-K, so let's dive right in so we can all see. We got our charge from Dr. Henry. Hear ye, hear ye, come one, come all, we will have full-day pre-K at the end of the fall. Full-day pre-K at the end of the fall? Full-day pre-K, is it really a must? In 100 days? Clearly, Dr. Henry doesn't have that much trust. Soon, the shout from Dr. Macias was clear. Full-day pre-K in Cyfair, parents, send your children here! January 6th was the target date to find 152 staff, 76 teachers, and 76 aides, praying no one would laugh. The HR team harnessed our super-talents and prayed to the powers that be. We also closed the door and developed a strategy. Hooray for pre-K! Hooray for pre-K! Dr. Stewart shouted every day. With her creative encouragement and snacks, we found our strength to make a way. We sent this radio blast across the Houston land.
Cypress Fairbanks ISD is now hiring pre-K teachers and teachers' aides. All-day pre-K begins in CFISD this January, and we're hiring now. Salaries start at 55 and 1/2 K. Apply at prekjob.com today. That's prekjob.com.
With the hopes of planting a seed, pre-K staff would come running to meet our needs. Searching all over, we started to look all around us. We asked ourselves, do we find them with a sign on a bus? Do we find them on Facebook? Or Twitter? That's a must. Do we find them from a school bulletin board? Oh, Region 4, surely you have some teachers for us. Wait, look, what do I see? Student teachers from Texas universities? Two, six, 20, 35 student teachers sprang forth to meet our needs. I want pre-K, I want pre-K, pick me, pick me! By January 6th, 149 teachers, student teachers, and teachers' aides were all hired with our trust to teach pre-K with love, skill, energy packaged and shared with robust. What did we learn from this opportunity, you ask? Cypress Fairbanks ISD has the talent to accomplish any task. Thank you. I would like to take a moment to give some few acknowledgements.
Pre-K teachers and aides brought to you by Board of Trustees, Superintendent Dr. Mark Henry, Human Resources, Business and Finance, Communication, Curriculum and Instruction, General Administration, Student Services, Transportation, Technology, and the 50 elementary campuses who provide full-day pre-K to our 3,862 pre-K students.
Could you have got a better voiceover on this?
We have the talent here, don't we? Questions?
Questions, I'm sorry. I was ready for another film.
I just want to say thank you. Wow, that's so impressive. That was a huge task that you were asked to take on, and you jumped in with so much energy and commitment and focus, and just so very impressive, thank you. And who benefits the most are those kiddos. And we've had the opportunity to visit some of those classrooms, and they're just vibrant, fun, the kids are playing, they're engaged, they're learning, and it's just an amazing environment for our students. So thank you so much. Thank you all very much, pre-K team.
Great report, we're glad to hear that. We knew it was going to be a challenge, but you all have met it, and like Julie said, we've been to the schools and seen that full-day operation, and it's, it's going well, so kudos to you.
Thank you.
Governor.
Same thing here. I've been to the different schools, and I'm just scared to get around the kids myself. But the teachers are amazing, the staff's amazing, and I've been seeing all your social media stuff for the last few months, and it's outstanding. I pass it around as far as I can around the country to all our different friends, but y'all did an outstanding job, and I'm so proud.
Thank you.
Ms. Jackson?
Nothing really to add that hasn't been said before, but also Deborah and Sharita, as well as the, the rest of the members of the HR team, thank you all. It was a big task, but we fully expect to see the rewards in the coming years, so thank you ever so much.
And just to kind of echo what everybody else says, when this came out, when Dr. Henry mentioned this, I looked at both of you, and I did not see disdain or anger. What I did see was, almost you could tell that your wheels were started, and you really jumped right in, and it's just, this is what makes Cyfair very special. Thank you very much for doing a stellar job, and certainly making that goal look really good.
Our pleasure. I'd like to acknowledge my team that's here to support this effort. The HR team, it feels, some of them are here, so if you'll please stand, so we can acknowledge you. And so, again, thank you for the opportunity to do that, and we have one last, "Hooray for pre-K!" Thank you.
5C, and on Monday, February the 10th, 2020, at the regular board meeting, the administration will provide a report on the progress of 2014 and 2019 bond programs. The board will now review the following consensus action items. Action Item 6A, the board consider approving the tax refunds of 500 or greater for Cypress Fairbanks ISD. We have questions only tonight. Do we have questions, board? We're okay? 6B, the board will consider approving the minutes of the January 16th, 2020 regular board meeting. Any questions or concerns about that? Okay, the board will now review the following non-consensus action items. 7A, the board will review and consider adoption of revised board operating guidelines outlining the duties of a public officer. This item may be discussed in closed session pursuant to Section 551.074. I don't believe we need that. And on Monday evening, if that's okay with you guys, I'd like that to stand alone, okay? 7B, the board will consider approving the budget amendments for the period of October 1st, 2019 through December 31st, 2019. Do we have any questions? Can we move that to consent? Thank you. 7C, the board will consider approving on first readings, additions, revisions, or deletions to district policies. One, BE local board meetings revise. Two, CDA local other revenues investments revise. Three, CH local purchasing and acquisition revise. Are there any questions or concerns? May we move that to consent? Thank you. 7D, the board will consider approving on second reading additions, revisions, or deletions to district policies. One, CKC local safety program, risk management, emergency plans are revised. Number two, CKE local safety program, risk management, security personnel revise. Three, EHBAF local special edition education, video, audio monitoring are revised. Number four, FFAA local wellness and health services, physical examination are revised. Number five, FFB local student welfare, crisis intervention, an add. Number six, FFBA local crisis intervention, trauma-informed care, an add. Number seven, FL local student records are revised. Number eight, AGBAA local information access, requests for information are revised. Number nine, GRA local relations with government entities, state and local government authorities are revised. We have any questions or concerns on any of this? No, can we move that to consent? Okay, moving to consent. 7E, the board will consider a waiver of full-day pre-kindergarten for 2019-2020 school year, and any pre-kindergarten partnership proposals with private providers for the 2019-2020 school year. And Ms. Latisha Bard has a brief presentation.
President Kofi, Board of Trustees, Dr. Henry, thank you for your time this evening to share the House Bill 3 pre-kindergarten waiver process. We are excited, where's the clicker? Did it please? Deborah, do you have the clicker?
I think I failed.
Oh, there sure is, thank you, Gilbert.
And the batteries came out, too.
It sure did. It's pre-K problems, it's what we had.
You got the right man working it.
Thank you. There we go. We are excited about our full-day pre-K implementation, and the Cypress Fairbanks ISD began on January 6th, 2020. According to House Bill 3 of the 86th Legislative Session, "School boards must consider approving the submission of a waiver for full-day pre-kindergarten during the 2019-2020 school year if the district did not implement a full-day pre-kindergarten program by September 1st, 2019." HB 3 further mandates, as part of the waiver, that school boards consider pre-kindergarten partnership proposals with private providers if the district did not implement full-day pre-kindergarten by the September deadline. House Bill 3 requires that full-day pre-kindergarten be provided for all eligible four-year-olds. The legislation required full-day programming to begin September 1st, 2019, and we are excited that we have implemented full-day pre-K in Cypress Fairbanks ISD since January 6th, 2020. CFISD chose the January implementation of full-day programming in order to provide adequate time to hire highly qualified teachers and fully equip the pre-K classrooms with additional materials that meet the Texas high-quality pre-kindergarten standards mandated by House Bill 3. Although we have already implemented full-day pre-kindergarten, we are required to complete the full-day pre-kindergarten waiver from TEA. The full-day pre-K TEA waiver requires a public meeting to solicit and consider potential partnerships with public or private entities regarding offering full-day pre-K for eligible four-year-old students at their locations. We held our public meeting to solicit the proposals for potential partnerships on January 13th, 2020. Today, we are asking you to consider the submitted proposals. The Texas Education Agency specifies that private providers meet certain requirements in order to be considered for partnerships. Private providers must currently hold a three- or four-star certification in the Texas Rising Star system, be a nationally accredited center, be a Head Start program provider, be a Texas School Ready participant, or meet the requirements under the Texas Education Code, Section 29.1532, which states that districts may enter partnerships with private providers who at a minimum comply with applicable childcare licensing standards adopted by the Department of Protective and Regulatory Services. The requirements for pre-K have not changed. As you may recall, students who are four years old, on or before September 1st, and meet one of the listed criteria, are eligible for a full-day pre-K. I won't review these, I know that you're familiar with them. There are specific program requirements that must occur in a pre-kindergarten class. One of the major components of the high-quality pre-K requirements is the specific qualifications for teachers. First and foremost, pre-kindergarten teachers must be appropriately certified in the state of Texas, and hold one of the additional early childhood-specific endorsements. Pre-K teachers, along with being certified, must hold a Child Development Associate credential, a Montessori certification, have at least eight years of experience teaching in a nationally-accredited childcare program, have a degree in early childhood education, complete the Texas School Ready comprehensive training, or complete 150 hours of professional development specific for early childhood education. At this time, we are serving all of our pre-K students in the Cyfair High Quality Full-Day Pre-Kindergarten Program. According to the law, if we had implemented full-day programming in the fall, we would not need to file for a waiver or go through this process. As the administration, we are confident that we will best serve our youngest learners and our Cyfair ISD schools. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Bard.
You're welcome.
Board, do you have any questions? Mr. Jackson?
A question and a comment first. I'd like to thank the two providers, both of them are quality entities, and I appreciate them, them coming forth. I know that we had a public-private partnership, and there's always growing pains when you go into something new. Is grant money still available for that, or was that grant money removed once full-day funding for pre-K went into effect?
The grant money for the pre-K partnership was for one year, so we have not had grant funding for that partnership for two years.
Very good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Great presentation, thank you, Ms. Bard.
Thank you very much.
We need to move that to consensus, right? Yes, is that okay? 7F, the board will consider awarding bids and contracts and are authorizing purchase orders as recommended in the posted agenda item. CFISD metal detectors, number two, cyber recovery vault. Any questions? Mr. Jackson?
Both of these items were well documented in the board book, but I think on the metal detectors, it makes sense to briefly talk about these, and why we're doing this, and where these might be placed. Could you expound a little bit on that for the viewing public, Bill?
The metal detectors will be placed at all the middle schools, high schools, the Berry Center, and the Pridgen Center as well. And you asked earlier about academic attainment, about metal detectors, but when you put everything together, the research shows all the layers that we're providing to establish a safe and secure environment for our students can increase student achievement and reduce disciplinary infractions.
So, so even though this is a physical asset, it still does in fact enhance student attainment, because we're, we're adding another layer of safety for our staff and students? Is that the, the way to look at this?
That's correct, and that's what the research, research shows.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Wait, whoa, whoa, Mr. Powell, I'm sorry. Anybody else? I did, I have a question, because I, I think it would be good to, I read the report, and I appreciate it. The metal detectors that we're talking about, especially in the middle and the high schools, and I'm thinking about high schools, how many were you planning on putting in our high schools? And I know with... And I know with as many students as we have, 3,000, how difficult is it gonna be to get those in in a timely fashion?
That's a great question, and I will have to defer to Chief. I know we are purchasing 89. I'm not sure of the exact numbers for each campus, and I know it'd be different based on the number of entries that we have per building.
So I don't have the exact number that we're replacing. What we're doing is we're replacing all the current metal detectors that we have at our locations, and then we're adding numbers. And so based on the population, some of those campuses will get more than others. And so it's to continue to do the random metal detector searches that we do as part of our drill process.
So it's not, they don't walk in through a metal detector every day, right?
No, sir, they will not. We do random metal detector searches so that the kids never know when or where that's gonna occur. And so it helps to ensure that our students aren't bringing things to school that they should not.
Okay. Ms. Heneman?
And I recall we had a lot of discussion about that when we were looking at the long-range planning process, and an outside safety audit was, or security audit was conducted by an outside firm who, that was the recommendation, is that we not have metal detectors at every door every day, but that we would use them sporadically for checks.
Through random searches.
Correct. So these are replacing ones that we have aging metal detectors.
And adding additional that we need, where we need additional ones at.
Okay, and then if I remember correctly, we also have random dog searches, too? Is that correct?
We do. The district has four canines. Three of them work primarily day hours. The canines are trained in narcotics and black powder or nitrate powder. And so the nitrate dog is able to find items such as guns, bullets, fireworks. And so that's to ensure that those items aren't brought on the campus as long, and also the narcotics are illegal drugs.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And if you're wondering, we've done about 492 searches to date.
Just today?
No, not today, to-date.
Oh, to-date. I was going to-
Not today. The dogs wouldn't make it that long.
Busy canine.
That's a buck.
Snake-fund it.
Okay, thank you. Can we move that to consent? Is that okay? Okay. 7G, the board will consider approving construction proposals and contracts paid from bond funds to the recommended contractor and authorize the superintendent or designate to execute all necessary documents related to such contract as follows. 2019 Keith Lowry McPhee Pope and Rennell Elementary School renovations. Anyone have any questions for Mr. Sprague? Yes, sir, Ms. Jackson?
Roy, were any of these campuses impacted by Harvey? Or is there any remediation that we need to do for any of these campuses that's part of this work?
These campuses were not impacted by Hurricane Harvey. We did have some road access issues in some of those areas, but we did not sustain any damages at those campuses. We are installing a detention pond on the Lowry campus as part of the construction improvements because we're including addition for classrooms to assist with the wall segmentation component that's included in the bond program of 2019 as part of one of our additional security measures that's being implemented by the district.
Since I live in that neighborhood and fairly aware of the campus, where's the detention pond going to be placed?
The detention pond, I believe, Dan, correct me if I'm wrong, is on the south, no, north side of the building, correct? Where the addition is, on the backside?
Northwestern corner.
Yep. So the additional will be, as you're facing Lowry, the additions to the left side, and then the pond behind that.
Very good. Thank you, Roy.
Any other questions? We okay? Can we move that to consent? Okay, thank you. 7H, the board will consider approving a site lease agreement with Crown Castle for the installment of a cell tower at Cypress Ranch High School and authorize the superintendent or designate to negotiate the final terms and condition and execute all documents. Any questions for Mr. Sprague on this? I do. Mr. Sprague? This last weekend, Dr. Ogletree and I attended an advocacy institute in DC, and one of the things that was talked about by the FCC Commissioner was that the new 5G, and I don't understand Gs at all, but anyway, the 5Gs coming on, and that's going to affect a lot of things, including microphones, I suppose, is what they're talking about. But they were also talking about that there was a potential of selling the airspace and making some extra money that would help with the broadband across the US. And one of the statements I remember that was made was that we have problems with broadband, not just rural areas, but also in urban and suburban districts, which is pretty obvious. You can be driving through Cyfair and lose yourself. Okay? So my question is, has to do with the Cy Ranch. Is this something that will help cover some dead spots in that area?
Absolutely. AT&amp;T is actually the provider that will be putting the tower on through Crown Castle. And we have a really bad dead zone between Cypress Ranch and that complex all the way to Anthony and Rennell Elementary School, that block of area. This tower will enhance that communication, not only for the residents of the school district, but also for our emergency services, as well as our communication within the district to provide services to those campuses.
And are there other areas we're looking at doing the same kind of a joint effort?
We're currently looking at potentially the Fairfield area. We're trying to work with the cell tower providers because we do understand there's some pocket problems within the Fairfield area. But the cell tower companies have had issues working with the HOAs within Fairfield, and so they're looking at some alternate site locations around Fairfield. But we're looking at some other options to see if we can come up with some solutions to help us out in terms of our communication in those areas.
So for the listeners at home, this really helps with the technology and students that are needing Wi-Fi in certain areas, and they can't get it. So this is something I think that is highly important, especially for our students. So I appreciate y'all doing that. Anybody got anything else? Can we move that to consent? Okay, and so, Superintendent's briefing portion of the agenda will be presented at the regular board meeting on Monday, February 10th, 2020. And if there is nothing more, we are adjourned. Thank you for being here.